All the January ninth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting of the City Council to order will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would Councilmember Cavalier lead us, please?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holtzclaw.
Here.
Mayor Protem Benio.
Here.
Councilmember Cavalier.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Duque.
Here.
And Councilmember Pack.
Present.
Okay, we'll begin with some swearing ins. We're going to swear in Councilmember Duque. Shall we go down front? Proper position, Scott.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Allison Duque.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution
That I support the Constitution.
and the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
That's City of Washington.
and that I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially
reform and discharge
Reform and discharge.
the duties of the office of the City of Mill Creek.
City of Mill Creek.
Council Position Six.
Council Position Six.
for a four-year term.
Four-year term.
according to the law to the best of my ability.
According to the law to the best of my Yeah, is that okay?
Relation you photo volunteered like
I didn't know we could hug the mayor. I didn't know that. Oh, that's cool.
Well, during last time, we got sworn in. It was still COVID. We had been because I looked at my bit. My family's got Are we doing the whole group? Did we start it? Everybody got up? Are we doing this? Okay, now, okay. We've been here before. Do you want us to switch around?
Should I come back in the middle? I want
Guys and girls.
Why does So you kind of look like the guy Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, or
Hey, now, 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 blue group here.
Yeah.
There we go. Where is the blue group? Because that's my side.
All right.
Yes. You're flying. Cute left turn.
All right, so now we have the mayor, Mayor Protem here. They buy ballot that you guys want mayor, Mayor Protem. And now we're just going to do your oath of office. So if you can repeat after me, I, Brian Holtzclaw. Having been duly appointed to the office of mayor of the City of Mill Creek, Washington, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and to the best of my ability, perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law and that I will support and maintain the laws and ordinances of the City of Mill Creek and the laws and Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America. All right, Mayor Protem, repeat after me. I, Stephanie Benio.
I, Stephanie Benio.
Having been duly appointed
Having been duly appointed.
to the office of Mayor Protem
To the office of Mayor Protem.
of the City of Mill Creek, Washington, do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully, impartially, and to the best of my ability, perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law and that I will support and maintain the laws and ordinances of the City of Mill Creek and the laws and Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America.
Okay, now that brings us to audience communication. Anyone in chambers like to address the council this evening? Is seeing no affirmative reactions? Anyone online like to address the council? Seeing not of heads, no. We'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. That brings us to presentations. Uh, are you going to name yours?
So we have Rob Fenty with nineteen sixty-one that is going to give us an update on long-term strategic plan.
Good evening, members of the council. I have a brief update for you this evening to share materials that I've shared with each of you individually, but to bring those to the group and provide a quick status update on progress as well as next steps. To remind you, to this point, I've reviewed all of the materials that have been sent to me by staff. I've interviewed all of the staff members, as well as met with each of the council members twice to find initial themes as a basis for the strategic vision. And I, and I will tell you, as I've relayed to each of you, I've found really good alignment at the early stages of the process and as a foundation for the strategic, strategic vision that you're looking for. These are a handful of the themes that came out of the process. Obviously, we've talked and it doesn't reflect all of them, but captures the core ones. As, as you've all stated, financial viability and sustainability of the city is key. It's, it's, it's really framed as a non-negotiable and, and at the center of your discussions as well as the vision for the city going forward. The, the thing that I would also relay back to you very, in a very positive manner is that I've found really high trust and respect among the council members as well as the staff, which provides for a great foundation for this discussion as well as your upcoming planning at the end of the month. So this is an opportune time to set a vision for the city and rally behind it in terms of decision. So that, that trust level, I think, provides a great foundation for the process that we're going through. As we've talked, there were three key themes that came out of the, the early discussions that really set the, the foundation for the strategic vision options that we'll start considering. The first is that the concept of clean and safe within the city is not only important, but also integrated in people's minds. So that idea of the city being cleaned, well-made, as well as perceived as a place of, a safe and secure place for people to live and raise their families is, is the first key theme. The second is the importance of outdoors and the connection to the outdoors. And the, the nuance of that is, is that this is really a well-maintained version of outdoors. Within the city boundaries, we're really talking about the idea of having well-maintained parks and trails and fields and connected sidewalk paths and tree-lined roads so that the feeling, the, the connection to the outdoors has a curated and well-maintained feeling around it. And then finally, there's a very strong connection to community. People have a very strong connection to Mill Creek as a place. There are specific markers of that that tie people's emotions to the city, like the town center, the sports fields, the schools, the golf course, of course. And these will, this conversation will be important as we start looking at the strategic vision options and starting to look at how do you tie that to specific things in the city or specific elements. They can be both physical markers as well as experiential markers like the community events. So this is the, the summary picture that we'll be using because it's not just one of these elements. It's the integration of the three together. And, and really, it's how do we optimize in the vision statement and the subsequent planning these three elements during any planning cycle so that thematically together, they, they really frame the city going forward. So as I go forward and start to frame strategic vision options for you, I'll use these three themes as guiding principles and play out different options of the strategic vision as well as what those mean so that we can really start comparing and contrasting. To help that process, as you know, I'll be looking at a handful of cities that we've identified to compare and, and also, and look through the lens of how Mill Creek will be, continue to be unique, why people will choose Mill Creek and what will differentiate it, as well as things that these cities may have done that are unique and that we can draw on. And so this is the list of cities that I'll be pulling together. I've already started doing comparative analysis that really will provide you a foundation going into your strategic retreat later in the month with a snapshot of these cities and around these key elements that we've identified so that we can start comparing and contrasting. And then as we've talked and we start narrowing in on the things that we're really interested in, we'll, we'll actually go and visit some of these cities later in the process. So in terms of next steps, as you lead to your strategic retreat, by that time, I will have a, a foundation of comparative research for you on the other cities as, as as backdrop for those discussions as well as a first draft of vision statements so that you can use that as, as a foundation for your strategic priority discussions. And then as we move into February, as I've mentioned to each of you, I'll be working with staff to reach out to the community, to engage the community in the process as well. So that's a, a brief update just to bring it in front of the group. I'm, I'm really happy with the level of alignment that I'm finding among the group and, and the engagement and the conversations. And I think it sets up a really productive conversation over the next thirty to sixty days to really start framing this into draft vision statements that we can start debating and, and, and really talking about. So Mayor, I'll stop there. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to, to take them.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions? I'm not seeing any. So thank you for the update. Look forward to continuing to work with you on this.
My pleasure. I, I as well.
Thank you. Okay, old business. So Deputy City Manager.
I'm going to bring this down for just a moment. All right, so I was just going to bring us back. So we did look at this item a few, I think it was probably about a month ago. There was some concern. They wanted, we had some council wanting some numbers. So I just wanted to walk through why staff is looking at this fleet lease equity option. So at this point in time, we know that all of the vehicle costs and maintenance costs are really increasing each year. And so staff is looking for ways to replace a large volume of the city's aging fleet while also spreading these costs more evenly across our different budget cycles. So right now, many of the times we have the general fund purchasing a vehicle and then transferring roughly twenty percent each year of that vehicle's principal cost. And then after a few years, we keep the vehicle with the city and eventually, maintenance costs start going up. And then we say, okay, it's time to get rid of this vehicle. But then when we go to purchase another vehicle, the vehicles have increased, if not thirty percent, almost double, especially during COVID. On top of that, with the COVID strains, we have had a very hard time purchasing vehicles. So we had put an order in for two different vehicles and it got bumped. And then one of the vehicles, the police vehicles that we had ordered, after they added us back to the list, they said, oh, by the way, also, it's going to be ten percent more. And you can either take it or leave it. So at this point in time, purchasing timing is looking to be about one to two years out. Every now and then you see one vehicle that might be available. We did jump on that on the Charger. There was one police vehicle with the outfitting we needed in the entire state. At this point in time, we do have quite a few different vehicles that have been aging that we do need to start moving out of our fleet. So with Enterprise's help, we could potentially be getting new vehicles in two to three months. So I think that is one of the biggest pieces or benefits for the city at this point in time. And then getting their specialized assistance with that rotation. So they're going to give us guidance on when is the best time to start moving your fleet out? So they know that maintenance costs typically happen between whether it's year two or three or which, wherever it happens, they're going to give us guidance on when the best time to sell is. And then that will help us in theory, end up budget neutral. So with this program, this is not a typical lease program and we can purchase or we can lease. So we can still participate in this program and purchase all vehicles outright, but that wouldn't necessarily help us with the spreading of the costs each year. And then if we did do the leasing program, we would be able to purchase more instead of doing one or two vehicles a year. It would be more like six, potentially. And we haven't finalized numbers yet because we will still have to be looking at these things. And these would be things we would be coming to you later with because the process isn't going to change. We still come to you every time we have a purchase over fifty thousand. But at this time, we're just looking at getting a motion for approval to move forward just with this contract, saying, hey, we do like the idea of working with you and using your economy of scale to purchase these vehicles. So with that, I'm going to pull this back up.
Sorry. How long is the lease with Enterprise?
It would be however long we wanted. Okay, so on the left-hand side of the screen, I think that's your left. This is typically how we handle purchasing. So for, I've got two different examples here. We have a police SUV. So we have a purchase price of seventy-eight thousand, five fifty-two. And typically, we keep these vehicles around five years. They're, because of the wear and tear, five years is five or less is normal to have them in patrol. But then a lot of the times, we will rotate those vehicles to maybe some kind of different staff car. So if they need vehicles to get to Burien for the training for our new officers, or if we wanted to move that to the police chief. It just depends on what our needs are at the time. But typically, when we go to sell these, we're getting three to ten thousand on police vehicles, depending on the condition of the vehicle. So that would be a budget expense of seventy-three thousand, five fifty-two. Same thing on the left for a public works F-150, we spent fifty-five thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars. And we're estimating that the end-of-life resale value, if this vehicle's running. So right now, we have two or three vehicles that that is not the case. So we aren't expecting this to happen every time. But we are expecting possibly to get ten thousand. So that would be a net budget impact of forty-five thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars. Something that I did not include in here is the increasing cost of maintenance. So if you have a vehicle for ten years, twenty years, the maintenance does really start to add up. But I didn't want to get too complicated in this example. So for the lease equity program, we would have essentially, so for the twenty-twenty-two police SUV, we have a purchase that would be your first year's annual interest and principal would be your cash out for that eighteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. We have a management fee of roughly one percent of the value of the vehicle. And then we have a resale value. So if we went around. So the big thing to be watching in here is this year one. I'm going to give an example for year one, year three, and year five. So if we decided after the first year, we wanted to sell that vehicle, we are estimating that we'll get around just under sixty-seven thousand dollars. So that would be a cash impact savings of just under forty-seven thousand. But we do still have this loan that we have to pay off. And so we'll have removed from that seventy-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollar purchase price, we will have removed that first principal payment. So that is the vehicle loan remaining for a cash expense of fifteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars. It's important to remember that in this figure is the outfitting of the police vehicle. So police vehicles normally do not work out as well as our public works vehicles because there is so much outfitting that goes into them. So for a lease, for the lease program, we will have the equity from each payment. So that's something to remember. Enterprise makes their money off of that management fee. So we would have, in the first year, we would have a principal payment and interest that would come out of the budget. So we would see that thirteen, two ninety, forty-eight hit our budget. And then we'll have the management fee hit cash as well. And if we said, okay, we're going to sell this vehicle after year one, this is also not taking into consideration that COVID has been really making these resale values go crazy. So sometimes you could make money, but we're we wanted to be conservative. So we said, okay, we're going to say that the value depreciated roughly ten percent. So that would give us just under fifty thousand on a resale. And for a net cash impact of thirty-five thousand, you take the vehicle loan out and we would have spent eight thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars. So that is if we did it in year one. And for year two, I feel like that got a little smaller. Okay. So in year two, this is going to stay the same because this would just be our initial purchase that stayed forever. Once we made the payment on the vehicle. So what's going to be changing here? So in year three, we'll have made principal and interest payments of just under fifty-seven thousand. We'll have management fees of two thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars over three years. And then if we said, all right, this is year three, we're ready to sell, this would come in roughly, we're estimating at about forty-three thousand, two oh three sixty. So to have used the vehicle for three years, we'd be looking at sixteen thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars, seventy-one cents. And if we said, okay, this is what we owe still. This is after the three years of payments. The cash expense for the vehicle would have been forty-seven thousand, six hundred two dollars. All right. So for public works, same thing, three years, principal and interest, management fee. If we said we're going to sell it after three years, we estimate just under thirty-nine thousand, a cash impact, three thousand, one hundred. We have the vehicle payment remaining for a cash expense of twenty-five thousand. And then in year five. Okay, so this is where you can really see that we start getting upside down. So this is where Enterprise's team that is telling us, this is when you should sell your vehicle. This is ideal for public works. This is when this is going to be the sweet spot for police for these vehicles. We know that you know, F-150s sell best between year one and three, and you're going to possibly be able to make some money on them. This is when we need to be listening to them. So you can see that in year five, if we did this program, we would have dropped, well, we would have spent ninety-four thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars because that is the principal of the vehicle. So that's seventy-eight, five, five, two plus all of the interest. And then on top of that, we'll have the management fees for resale value. So your resale value continues to drop as your vehicle ages. And for a net impact of seventy-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. So you can see that we now would have spent more if we waited that long than if we had just bought it outright. And again, maintenance is something you could consider in there as well. But if we didn't sell the vehicle, the vehicle would be ours to keep for as long as we wanted. So it is completely up to staff if we, when we want to sell, but we would be following guidance from Enterprise, or that would be my recommendation. For the F-150, it is not quite the same situation, but we are still at forty-two thousand versus forty-five. Does anyone have any questions just about that piece?
What is the average lifespan of our police vehicle?
Around five years. And I will say that is if the transmission doesn't end up blowing up or our turbos because we've had a lot of issues with our turbos and our transmissions. It may be closer to three without much maintenance.
Because I noticed you put down here five to ten. And I was wondering why you did that because if they're less than five years.
So for patrol. So we will rotate them out. And we do have some that are around eight years right now. So we've been having issues getting police vehicles that we can keep on a list for.
Right, right.
And so we have been keeping them way longer than normal. But I mean, we do have quite a few still. So it is, I would say, in patrol, they are not kept but about three to five years. But if the transmission has not been blown and our turbos are okay, then we transfer them to either
A less strenuous use. Okay. But we, okay, so for patrol, though, patrol is less than five years, five years or less. Okay.
Councilmember Cavalier.
Thanks, Mayor. And, and this, this might help some of the council that may not understand kind of the, the process of police cars and the wear and tear. Our city, our guys don't have, and ladies don't have take-home cars. So they don't sit in a driveway for twelve hours a night or, or in a precinct, you know, half the day. They're constantly being used. So our wear and tear and use of our police vehicles are, are much, much more of a use than, than let's say, the sheriff's office of someone who takes their car home to Everett and has it sit in the driveway for half a shift and, and, and eventually half the week as well. So that's why I think the leasing makes sense. And I think I kind of alluded to that last time you spoke, that, that I think this is probably a good idea. And I trust that you you know, have costed this out. But, but just, just as a background that, that everybody understands that, that we're, we use them a lot quicker, most likely, and we're probably a lot tougher on them just for that fact alone.
All right. So with that, I will hand it over to Joe. And he is going to give you some more information.
All right. Thank you, members of the council. Mayor, Mayor Protem. Yeah, I appreciate the time, the, the first time, and happy to, to come back in person, hopefully with, out any audio issues. Yeah, just to give you a quick background on kind of the, the program and a little bit of what we do for some of the cities not far from here. Yes. So you should have all access to this. Certainly no, no stranger to cities of roughly Mill Creek size, not too far away. And Enterprise is a source well-awarded vendor. Just rewon the contract for a second or third time, I believe. It really what everything that we do for our municipal clients comes down to is that the line share costs for any vehicle come in depreciation, maintenance, and fuel. Um, insurance, registration, taxes, there, there are some beyond that, you don't have a lot of control over. Um. What those look like over time is depreciation will be steeper when a vehicle is brand new, uh, compared to when it's. Fifteen, twenty years old, it really doesn't have any value left to lose. Fuel will start out as cheap as it's gonna be, uh, as time goes on, the price of the pump will go up, and eventually a vehicle will. Uh, lose a little bit of fuel economy. Uh, maintenance will start out as as cheap as it's gonna be, it's in a warranty, couple oil changes. At some point in time, whether it's time or miles, uh, vehicles will start costing significantly more. Um. The easiest way to look at what enterprise does, um, for our clients is. Not only, um, to make recommendations, but, uh, off of industry averages, but take the city's actual data. Uh, and quantify all of these items over time, so that we're, this is really isn't a gray area. They they become black and white and that the numbers are what the numbers are. Um, what we find with the buying power of most cities for the white fleet, uh, in particular, rather than the black and white fleet. Um, the purchasing power that you have, the low miles that you have. Um, and if you add in enterprise's ability to sell vehicles significantly above market average and. Especially above public auctions, the cheapest thing to do for most vehicle types, P D aside unfortunately. Uh, is to replace them a lot sooner than conventional wisdom would say, when the vehicle is still worth significant money. Uh, and before you've really put much into it in maintenance, some exceptions would include twenty five thousand dollars of outfitting. Um, medium duty vehicles, right, there, there are exceptions, but for the most part. Um, we, we would expect to save money largely just by keeping the fleet, uh, vehicle by vehicle, the optimum time, rather than just running them until failure. Uh, just an example, I use pre covid numbers on on purpose because as Laurel mentioned, um. Resale market has been unsus- unsustainably high. Um. And this speaks to the purchasing power that governments are entitled to, it did go away for a couple of years in the midst of covid. Manufacturers didn't really have an incentive to give municipal discounts, um, but they are coming back as of this year. Uh, so the average consumer right at the beginning of covid in Washington. Uh, would buy this pickup for thirty four seven, um, you guys would have bought it at twenty eight seven off the state contract. Or twenty seven eight significantly under that. Um, you're required in the fine print in order to receive that discount to run the vehicle at least six months, which is. Perhaps a hassle to change vehicles that quickly, even after a year, the vehicle is worth significantly more than you paid for it. Um, we've been doing this routinely long before covid, obviously it worked really well, uh, for a few years there during covid. Um, but we expect it to continue to be an opportunity on select vehicle types. Uh, save money literally by even turning a little profit.
Uh, these are pre covid, what are the resale values now?
Um. Much, much, much higher.
Much, much higher than that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, we, for example, just, I I don't wanna set this as the standard expectation going forward, but. City of Spokane's first vehicles, they ordered through enterprise were F two fifties. Uh, we sold them two years later for twelve grand, uh, more than they paid for them per truck. Uh, that's extreme, I don't, I don't want that to be the expectation, but to answer your question, that that's what extreme looks like during that market. Um, so this is what we keep track of, this is a resale market as long as I've been tracking it back to ninety five. Um, there's the covid market after the first couple of months where no one was buying anything. Um, you can see oh nine there, and then each year you can see a seasonal swing where. Spring it will come up, summer it will stay strong, fall and winter it will drop. Um, so thi- this is what we're doing for our own fleet, uh, you guys are most able to mirror what we do for a rental fleet. Uh, again, it's the purchasing power and the low miles, the the missing link prior to enterprises, the ability to sell vehicles and net. Uh, an above market return rather than a public auction where the returns just wouldn't be enough to justify it. Um, there was questions on the lease I wanted to address last time, um. So when, when we say lease for the vehicle, most people would obviously think of a dealership lease. Known as a close end lease or a a net lease, um, that's a a really. Not advisable way to manage municipal fleet, um. It's essentially a rental contract where you have no rights to the equity at the back end. Uh, you have a hard turn in date, mileage restrictions, wear and tear penalties, I mean, for a multitude of reasons, it doesn't make any sense. Uh, an equity lease is simply a finance down to a balance rather than higher than zero. Um, so if we're planning on replacing a vehicle in three years, or four, or five, or six, or whatever it may be. Uh, and we expect, let's say it's a forty thousand dollar vehicle, and we expect to get twenty five thousand for it. Um, at the time we anticipate it making sense to replace, which doesn't need to be set in stone, but we at least. Uh, set some sort of expectations, the one we think it will make sense. Um. City would pay the vehicle from forty down to fifteen, um, only outlaying the the twenty five. Um, assuming the vehicle is still worth twenty five, we would pick it up, sell it on the city's behalf. Uh, pay off the fifteen with the resale proceeds, and the delta between those two, the ten thousand dollars is property of the city. Um, most cities choose to roll that into the department's next vehicle rather than send it back to the general fund. So the department has some incentive, um, to keep a responsible life cycle of their fleet. Um, if the resale market's terrible and two thousand nine or ten happens, we we would just keep, we would extend the lease and recommend keeping the vehicle in service. Uh, if the resale market peaks again, i.e. Spokane, um, we'd recommend replacing it much earlier than planned. And so we would assign a dedicated team, and their job is to make recommendations vehicle by vehicle on when it makes sense to replace each vehicle. And what the least expensive options in the market are, um, makes no difference in enterprise what make model manufacturer we go with. Um, so a couple of key distinctions on an open end lease, there are no mileage limits or penalties. Or no wear and tear penalties, it's your vehicle, it's your equity. Um, to drive it less, it will sell for more, drive it more, it will sell for less. Um, talked a little bit about maintenance. With loads of vendors that we use for our fleet and rental vehicles right here on in the local tax base. Uh, we would expect through our, uh, team base, he certified tax and, um, economies of scale, we'd expect to be able to make a pretty good dent there. Um, talked about resale, it really is the most critical piece for making this work, uh, we significantly outpace, um, the market. Uh, especially if you compare that to public auctions, that's, that's how we make most of our money on the rental side. So we, our lot is down in Taquilla where we would sell most of these vehicles. A couple of key years, keep in mind, uh, anything two thousand seven or newer has anti-lock brakes and airbags. Anything twenty twelve or newer has electronic stability control, um, which is. Maybe the most important thing that's not talked about too much from a vehicle safety standpoint, uh, backup cameras in twenty eighteen, and then. I mean, now here we are in model year twenty four, collision warnings and lane departure warnings, blind spot warnings and cross traffic alerts, um. Substantially safer than vehicles used to be just ten, fifteen years ago. Um, we put together, we reviewed these last time, uh, but but two bottles that. One for the P D fleet, one for the non P D fleet. Uh, this would be the non P D fleet, can see it from a a model year standpoint, we just have one in the last ten years. Um, the replacement plan we worked with the team on, um, Peter replaced six of the. Uh, oldest vehicles, some of which are not running at the moment. Um. For a lease cost of sixty six and change, we'd expect to get twenty one grand back for those. Um, for a a all in fleet budget in the first year of seventy seven, uh, nine. The, a a key distinction, I think this might go to, uh, council member Steckler's question earlier, uh, the, a month ago. Um, that yellow bar across the top, uh, is what we worked with the city to figure out, well, what it would cost to buy one vehicle. With cash a year, um, it would cost about eighty five thousand between the vehicle cost, the maintenance and the fuel. Um, and so that's what we're comparing to when we project fifty three thousand eight seventy four in savings over the next ten years. Any questions on this before we move on?
Don't get too excited, cause P D does offset that.
Yeah, unfortunately, police vehicles with the high mileage, the heavy wear, the really expensive outfit, the high cost. And a poor resale market, there is no way unfortunately that we can save the city money by replacing vehicles faster. The reason we replace a P D vehicle is because it's not reliable, it's not safe. We have a duty to the officer to make sure their vehicles are in decent condition.
Um, I have another question, uh, what about the, the, on the P D vehicles, maybe you could get to this, the D, uh.
Decommissioning?
Yeah, decommissioning and.
Enterprise can handle it, um, for the city, you guys can do it yourselves, we can transfer after market, we can facilitate it. Um, or the city can do it themselves.
Okay, is that cost incorporated in this analysis?
We're, we're actually assuming we would just, um, that we wouldn't be able to recapture any of the equipment. In reality, we may or may not be able to, depending on model year changes, electronics are tough, but some of the cages and stuff. Right, so that would, that would be above and beyond what we project in savings.
Uh, if you're going from a Ford to a Chevy, those cages in the back aren't gonna be the same size, so that may not transfer, but. If we're replacing with the same vehicles, then we may be able to transfer those outfitting items.
Yeah, as we would for, um, the non P D vehicles as well, toolboxes, headacracks, beacon lights, all that stuff is typically cheaper to. To just move over, which we did not account for. Um, there's some questions about the average age earlier, you know, being in, um, core rotation for three to five years and then. Kind of being, um, pushed down the line for a lighter use, uh, and then being extended based on the the lack of availability. Um, here's where we project the police fleet, this is keeping every vehicle, um, a maximum of five years. We did, overall, uh, we anticipate a a cost of thirty two hundred dollars a year, thirty two thousand over the next ten. Um, we would not have a police vehicle run past five years, in in reality, we may have a a few one off case by case vehicles where we. Roll them into an admin role, um, but we're confident at a a cost of thirty two thousand, we'd be able to not keep anything past five years. Um. Combined with the the fifty three that we'd anticipate saving the city on the white fleet, um, overall, we would, we would net in the black. Provided more stable budget, newer, more reliable vehicles, lower carbon footprint.
I'm curious on, uh. Fiscal year thirty two, um, you have a zero. Uh, s- s- cost, uh, or savings on equity leased, why is that?
We don't anticipate selling any of the lease vehicles that.
That's cause there's no selling that year, okay.
Yeah, so equity owned would be as we move through the vehicles currently in the fleet. So we'd have some in the first year, none in the second, third, fourth, fifth, so and then we would run out of vehicles that the city owns outright, and then they would all be in the lease program. Any other questions on this for the rest of the fleet program?
I don't think so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Laura, Laura, before you get too far down the road, I would also appreciate knowing how long the city intends on, um, signing a lease for ahead of time.
So it would be vehicle by vehicle, and each time we come to you, we would say, we're looking at leasing a vehicle, it would be. Five year lease, three year lease, um, it would depend on the vehicle and what's recommended.
Okay, so we're not, um, giving an exclusivity then to enterprise for our vehicles.
Correct.
Uh, okay, alright.
So we're only saying we want to participate in your program.
Got it.
Um, we can still buy vehicles outright if we decide it would be more beneficial for us to go ahead and. We budgeted four vehicles for this budget, so we're gonna purchase four outright and maybe we'll lease. To the four more, depending on what council approves and what our budget looks like. Um, so we're not stuck in any one situation with this, um. And then something to think about, if this is something that we move into, we will have a future item. Um, that'll have to come forward on how we dispose of our fleet, um, so right now in code, it would have to be done by auction. And so because we would be having them sell the vehicle for us, we would need to change that.
Sorry, if I speak to that really quickly. Um, this is something we've gone through with all of our city clients, because wh- when we sell them, they get sold. Uh, on the commercial market wholesale to dealerships, um, and they are for sale to, uh. And advertise to the general public, um, typically that has satisfied the requirement, if there's another requirement beyond that. Um, I, we could certainly look at it and and just make sure we're compliant, but. It's a good point to bring out that it it's pretty critical that we get as much for those vehicles as as we can.
And then, um, the chief just wanted me to point out, I didn't really talk about the maintenance piece, so. We will be able to hand over the tracking of all of the maintenance to enterprise, so they will handle that and they will approve, so we'll say. We'll give them a threshold, say three hundred, five hundred dollars, anything over that, um. They would have to send to us to say, do you want to do this? Um, I think one good example was. Um, they don't typically have us replace tires, so if there's gonna be some kind of large tire replacement, they may just. Tell us, hey, you may wanna just consider selling the vehicle, um, so they're gonna be considering, and. Um, so they're gonna be considering all of these pieces, um, but they also would have that. Uh, negotiated price for the different maintenance type, so oil changes. Maybe three to five dollars cheaper, twenty dollars cheaper through them versus if we did it outright, our staff may not know. The specifics of what all should be done on a vehicle, and we make it a recommendation and staff says, I think that sounds right, okay, let's do that. Where these people do this every day, and so they would be able to tell us if that was something we should be doing. So, yeah. Any questions?
Councilor Cavalieri?
Uh, no more questions, I I have to say though, I I, I really. Both the last presentation and this presentation was really well put together, both, both of you, city staff and enterprise, and and. This is really, I I think, just the next evolution in in vehicle purchasing for cities, and I think. I think what we can't miss is that their ability to grab us vehicles on a moment's notice can't be overlooked because. A city our size, losing, let's say, two patrol vehicles at the same time or within the proximity at the same time. Could could cripple a city where we're borrowing vehicles or having to lease other vehicles from the county, so, um. Kudos for bringing this forward, I think it makes a lot of sense, and I and I'm happy to make a motion if need be.
See if there's other, Councilor Stecker.
Save my, my comments till after the motion's made.
Okay, Councilor Duque. Okay, go ahead, Councilor Cavalieri.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a city manager to execute a lease and maintenance agreement with Enter- Enterprise Fleet Management Inc.
Second.
Discussion? Councilor Stecker?
Yes, I I, uh, I wanted to echo some of the comments that Councilman Capital Cavalieri said. Uh, great presentation, I've been trying to find something wrong with this suggestion, as a council member, you know, is there anything I can do to look at this? Objectively and say, geez, is there anything wrong with it and, um, and I must say, I I think it's a very smart decision. Um, I do like the fact also that it it, keeping in mind our clean and safe. Uh, edicts that we want to consider in our strategy going forward. A fleet of patrol of, uh, vehicles that are no more than five years old, that are, that are, that are safe, that are clean, that are, um. That our officers are 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 safe in, I I I kind of like that as a, uh, an edict that a city can proclaim, so. I I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, I I commend you on a, both of you, in and out, vendor to city, nice job.
Councilor Duque?
So I had two questions, uh, the first had to do with the, um, this document that you were sharing with us, and so, um. It looks to me, and so I guess I'm just making sure I understand this best, um, it looks to me based off of the numbers, the one that's, um, for twenty twenty two police SUV. Program in a year three, looks way better than obviously year five. But because of the amount of equipment and things that are put into it, is it more likely that police vehicle would. Stay for five years, or you're thinking it would be for three? Fantastic, um, I'm getting, uh, for clarity for anyone watching. I'm getting, uh, my answer was that yes, it would be, uh, three years, um, and then my, um, other question is, you mentioned. That, um, that it's already budgeted for four, um, and to to purchase outright. And to, to purchase outright, but now that we're going this direction, would you relook into if instead of purchasing those outright, that we would actually look into doing the lease part, or is it hard stone that you're, sorry?
Most definitely, we would look into the leasing program and find out what would work best for the city.
Fantastic, thank you for those answers.
Councilmember Paddock?
Just diddling what the gentleman to my left had said and also wanted to add, I just think fiscally and operationally, this is, this is the right move, so definitely vote for this.
Any further discussion? There are none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, brings us to our new business, Mr. Bean.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council and honored guests. Today is the second of three scheduled presentations on the twenty twenty four pavement preservation project. Oh, thank you. Where I'll be discussing a, a motion for a professional services agreement. I'd like to tell you how we got to this point with some familiar photos. After we met last time, we advertised requests for qualifications and got proposals from some highly qualified, very motivated design groups. And after scoring those, one group came out on top, TranTech Engineering. Their office is out of Bellingham, they're a very, very experienced team with new road, road reconstruction and road rehabilitation projects, we brought on a geotechnical group who has extensive, have done extensive work within the city and all around Lake Washington. Even beyond that. And a survey group that has done a lot of work in the area as well. After we selected that team and started to discuss the scope of work, we discovered that Seattle Hill Road was starting to show some great distress. We'd even received some calls from the public to go out and address the potholing that was happening, we've gone out immediately after that and addressed that, but we've included the design of this segment of roadway within the project, so that's a little different than the last time we spoke. If at the end there is budget allowed, this portion of the project would be an alternate. So we'd have the original paving and then we'd have this alternate that they could bid on. But right now, we're just focused on getting the design and understanding what it takes to fix this. On our initial walk with the geotechnical group, it's thought that maybe it's a subgrade failure, that's part of that. So working with TranTech, we worked on the, the final scope. And I want to step through that and you can see the, the budget that comes along with that. Project management, that's basically working with me. Survey and mapping, we don't have GIS information at the level we need for ADA sidewalk replacement and knowing where all the manholes and valves are that we need to miss during paving operation. So we have surveyors coming in. Geotechnical group is to look at a few locations, twenty fifth, twenty third, Seattle Hill Road are the main areas and they're going to take some borings to understand the thickness of the pavement and then the subgrade, see what type of reconstruction or resurfacing is needed there. Also, there's civil engineering related tasks, that is the actual design and outreach effort needed to, to do. We'll have a fifty percent and a ninety percent submittal. And at right around thirty percent, we're going to do a mailer to all of the, the HOAs and the addresses for homes that are not within an HOA. That was also something that's occurred since the last time we spoke, I was able to put together a list and make contact with the HOA leads and acquire the addresses for all those folks outside of that as well. And then the last part of this is the Seattle Hill Road, which we want to keep separate because we're just looking at design right now, we're not really sure what that is going to entail. The schedule still stays pretty close to the same. You know, last time I was here was phase one and that was October twenty first, twenty fourth. We had all of our proposals come in on November twenty first and I'm here on the ninth. Our fifty percent design submittal will be March thirteenth and the ninety percent will be April twenty first. But we're still working towards coming back at the early part of the summer of July second is what I have here. To get final agreement on a, a motion for the construction of the project itself. And we're still on track to finish by the end of November of next, of this year. Any questions?
Councilmember Stekler?
A quick question, and this relates way, way back before I even became a councilman when I sat out there. But on Seattle Hill Road, an old residence I had backed up on too, Seattle Hill Road, and I know when we did the repaving back there, we were all very concerned, those of us who backed up to that, the, the noise. And when they repaved it, they, they used a repaving that substantially reduced the noise. And I was wondering if that's going to be a consideration, not only on Seattle Hill Road, which is a little bit early to, to tell right now, but maybe with some of these other repavings that really helped to reduce the, the noise for the residents and HOAs around some of these repaving projects.
Well, fresh pavement will automatically reduce the noise that was there before and there was an experiment that Wash Dot was doing around two thousand twelve or thirteen.
About twelve.
And those pavements didn't live up to the expectation, they were quiet at the beginning, but then they just turned out to be regular pavement.
We're talking about old Seattle Hill Road, that goes down by the environmental center, right?
Right, and you know, when you get to the, the bottom of the hill there by the pond and the environmental school and there's a culvert underneath, that's what this picture is of.
There, there are no houses that back up against old Seattle Hill Road that I'm aware of.
I'm talking about the Seattle Hill Road that runs back behind, where it, it partitions between the, the Mill Creek Community Association and your, your area. Parks.
This is not within that limit.
It's not?
No, this is a, it has a.
This is down the hill going from the, from the stoplight there?
That was, that was the area where they repaved, that used a quieter pavement and it substantially reduced it.
Yeah, along Seattle Hill Road and Mill Creek, and Mill Creek, was it from the light going down to one?
Down to thirty fifth. It went all the way down.
And the, and the picture to your.
That's probably not this Seattle Hill Road.
Little driveway there is that school.
Right, yeah, this is.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, this might be something else, but it's something to consider when you're doing this repaving, I, I remember being a resident, how incredibly pleased I was with the reduction in noise, it was magical. So I don't know where we are with paving nowadays.
Well, you know what I'm going to do, I'm going to make sure that we do take a look at that.
Well, that was also an issue with the, like you said, the residents there and it was done in conjunction with the reduction of the speed limit if,
Right.
if I remember correctly, but.
We put the speed bumps in and reduced it to twenty five.
We didn't put any speed bumps in, but we reduced the speed limit down.
I thought we did put a little bump in.
No, but there are no residents, residences backing up against any portion of this road.
You know, in our first look at this, you know, there's going to be some traffic impact with this because this entire roadway width needs to be reconstructed. So it may be done in stages where there's like one lane and you could have some various elevations while we're building that, it will be some impact.
Where, wherever there's an HOA or, or residents that are being impacted, wherever we can provide a, a, a noise dampening pavement of some kind will be extremely well received, extremely well received. And that would be great.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Allison?
Yeah, I just had. Sorry, I just had one question, could you go back to the slide with the dates on it, please?
I think there's a date.
Yeah. So I, I heard you say April twenty first for phase six. Okay, just, just verifying.
I should have brought something to give you for that.
Thank you.
I noticed that after I had submitted it.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, I actually have a question, I want to go back, you don't have to move the slide, I want to go back to the old Seattle Hill Road. And I wonder when we work on fixing the pavement right down through there, is that going to help the fact that it floods a little bit down there or is that a totally different thing to stormwater?
My observation, I've been here for a short time, but my observation of the flooding was farther south. You have the, the learning center and it dips down by a pond and that's where I observed flooding earlier this year.
City engineer?
I can address that, we are currently investigating the area that floods along Old Seattle Hill Road. It is noted as a fish passage barrier, so we're investigating options for funding to replace that to address both the fish passage and the flooding along there.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much for that answer.
Councilmember Paddock?
I just had one question, I think it was on your work element two, you mentioned lack of GIS capability. Did I hear that right?
Yes, yeah.
And didn't we appropriate some ARPA money to that? I don't know if that is, can help with this little rub or not, but it sounds like y'all are, know what's going on there.
We are preparing an RFQ for a GIS system for the city currently. So we are working on that, it won't be ready for this project, but we are working on it.
Councilmember Cavallari?
Thanks, Mayor, and let me preface this question by not being ungrateful for grant money, but how did this project qualify for a Department of Ecology grant if it's a roadway project?
Apologies, this is from, this project is from REIT, we are investigating Department of Ecology grants for other items.
Am I on the wrong one?
We're on it today. It's early in the.
Oh, wrong.
Scratch that.
You know, some of my favorite meetings is when I've been able to catch things and the instructor kind of gives me something for being on the ball, I'd, I'd like to do that.
The January ninth agenda, Vince? Are there any other questions?
Today I'm here for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a professional services agreement with TranTech Engineering not to exceed two hundred and eighty five thousand, five hundred and ninety five dollars and forty three cents, inclusive of all taxes. My original engineer's estimate was two forty, so this is within seventeen percent of that number.
Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager professional services agreement with TranTech Engineering not to exceed two hundred and eighty five, five ninety five and forty three cents, inclusive of all taxes.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There are none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Very much.
Mr. Carmody?
Good evening, council, how are you all tonight? I'm here to speak to you about the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five Department of Ecology Water Quality Surface Water Capacity Grant. The city has been receiving this surface water capacity grants for the past several budget bienniums. The current grant expired June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. This included a three month extension, which brought the grant to a seventy five thousand dollar total. These grants are intended to provide funding to, for the staff to, for the city to pursue projects to meet our NPDS permit requirements for our stormwater system. NPDS, the National Pollutants Elimination Discharge System, Discharge Elimination System. The current grant we just received notice that we have received is for one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And this has already been included in the, in the amended biennial budget. This grant is intended to go through July first of twenty twenty three through March thirty first of twenty twenty five. We will be using this grant for catch based assessments, catch based cleanings and other projects to improve water quality in our stormwater across the city. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I think now that I'm on the right agenda topic, I'd like to make a motion. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager his designated executive in agreement with the Department of Ecology for the twenty twenty three to twenty five water quality stormwater capacity grant.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There are none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Carmody again, speed limits.
Yes. All right, I am here to speak to you about the reducing the speed limit on State Route ninety six. The staff was contacted by the regional Watch Dot Traffic Engineer regarding the speed limit on State Route ninety six, this is between this is one hundred and twenty eighth Street Southeast and one hundred and thirty second Street Southeast between Dumars Road and Seattle Hill Road. Basically, the Watch Dot engineers have done extensive studies along this area looking at speed and traffic incidents and found that it could benefit to reduce the speed, the current speed in this area is forty five miles an hour with the exception at the school, during school zone hours, when it's thirty five miles an hour there. They are recommending to move the entire area to forty miles an hour and leave the school zone as thirty five. This is a map of the overall areas. Note that the west end of it does extend outside of the city and they are pursuing county approvals for that section. But from Dumars through to Seattle Hill Road, this includes on the top, the measured speeds of the actual traffic, the fiftieth percentile, which is half the people go this, this speed or less. And the eighty fifth percentile, which is eighty five percent of people go this speed or less. On the bottom discusses the collisions that were discovered in there or that have been reported along the area in each of the individual sections. So according to this, the study was performed between August first, twenty twenty two and August first of twenty twenty three. There were two hundred and thirty two crashes or incidents, sixty eight injury crashes and, but there were no fatalities noted. The annual average daily trips varied along the length from twenty six thousand to thirty three thousand, or almost thirty four thousand trips. So this is what I mentioned earlier, the fiftieth percentile along the overall area ranged between thirty nine and forty six miles per hour with an average of about forty three. With the eighty fifth percentile ranged from between forty two and forty nine, with an average about forty seven. For the school zone itself, the thirty, the fiftieth percentile was thirty five miles an hour, which is the school zone speed limit. And the eighty fifth percentile was forty two miles per hour. So the process that this has gone through, Wash Dot has done the studies, they have done the engineering recommendation, they have come to this, to the city staff, staff supports this recommendation. Staff has asked the police department about whether or not they would support it and police do support it as well. That was taken back to the Northwest Regional Traffic Engineer, who has now approved it for Wash Dot, we are now at the city council's support, so that's where we are now. From here, Wash Dot will go and get the state patrol's approval, they'll get the headquarters approval. We will have to come back here for a formal ordinance changing the speed limit and then the signs will be installed with proper notice and flagging of the reduced speed limit along Highway ninety six. Are there any questions?
Do you have an estimated timeline for those other steps to occur?
They are very close to being done simultaneously with this, so the, both the state patrol and head, head, state patrol's going on right now, headquarters happens immediately afterwards, they anticipate it being a very quick approval.
Okay, Councilmember Allison?
Yeah, just one question because I'm unfamiliar with who owns what on those county or those highway, state highways and there's county and city, do we, do we have responsibility for the signage that's within the city limits of that road on one side or how, how does that work?
I believe Wash Dot is responsible for the signage itself, we are responsible for the overall maintenance of the roadway as well as the policing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor? Uh, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for bringing this to us. I know I see quite often, I see people commenting that there have been accidents. Uh, along that area. Um, and one question I have, and I, I don't know if you, you have the answer. I'm wondering, as part of this study, did they actually check out any changes that might need to happen at the um, stoplight right there? At one thirty-second and Seattle Hill Road, because I see quite a few accidents that seem to be happening there. Whether or not that's anecdotal, me seeing things on Facebook or reality. So do we know, did they look at that as part of this study when they were looking at the, all the, the occurrence of the accidents?
So they did look at the, it's probably lumped in with the zone four collisions on. The left hand, or the right hand side here. Um, but I don't know that they looked at specific changes to the signals themselves. They were only looking at doing a speed change right now. Uh, going in and taking a look at uh, signals themselves would require actual studies of the movements at the signal.
Okay.
And so that's a much more intensive investigation.
Oh, uh, okay, Chief is raising his hand now.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, we wouldn't have a whole lot of data on that as our city is concerned, because that intersection is actually under the jurisdiction of the sheriff's office.
Okay.
And the state patrol, so if it were to have occurred in that intersection, intersection, we wouldn't have that data.
Okay, well, thank you. I was just curious they had looked at it too when they were doing this whole study, so thank you for that information.
Councilmember Cavalry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just for the record, I've always thought forty-five miles an hour was just way too fast on that road in general. Why, why only that section though? Why aren't, why isn't, and I know that this is where we're at because we're the city, but. Why isn't the state moving to just lower the speed to forty, I mean, on the road instead of kind of making it a confusing process as you piecemeal it through different towns?
Well, this road, as you can actually see uh, on this exhibit, outside of the forty-five mile an hour area on both ends, it is thirty-five. And so this would be lowering this middle section that is forty-five currently to forty.
Is it thirty-five past Seattle Hill Road? I thought it was forty, I thought it was forty-five there.
According to Wash Dot passed. Okay. This exhibit came from Wash Dot, so.
Yeah, no, one, he wants to get past Seattle Hill Road going out to lower. Forty-five. Um, anyway.
But anyway, that would be a less urban area.
Right.
More rural, so it could support the forty-five better than through our area.
Councilmember Duque.
So I, I had a question about school hours, but I wanted to just um, flag what um, Mayor Protem said, because it was on Facebook and it was someone had posted a. A letter of response that um, someone from Was, uh, W S dot um, shared and it was that they were. Uh, implementing the change for a flashing yellow arrow um, on um, nine, on one thirty-second and Seattle Hill Road. As part of their thing, so that they, they did, there, there was some um, language that was shared and I think that's why we were monitoring that. Um, but. Uh, it's good to know that that specific intersection then is not. So I get, I'm, I, my, my pausing is because of what Councilmember Allison said about trying to understand whose jurisdiction is. Is, is what and what we need to maintain and, and policing or patrolling, and so I'm confused why that intersection isn't, is not. Versus, but the intersection on one thirty-second and thirty-fifth is ours, or is it still, it just, that tail ends?
It's, it all comes down to where they draw the jurisdictional boundaries for the city versus the county.
Mm-hmm.
And so because ninety-sixth, one thirty-second is a state route. Um, the jurisdictional boundary was drawn on the west side of the intersection.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if you are on the west side of, if you come to a stop at that stop line on the west side of the section.
Mm-hmm.
And you're rear-ended from another, by another vehicle, that collision actually occurred in the city of Mill Creek.
Okay.
If you were to pull into that intersection and have a collision inside the intersection. That collision occurs in the Snohomish County unincorporated area.
Mm-hmm.
And therefore, because it is a state route, either the state patrol or the sheriff's office will respond. It's just the way that they draw the boundaries.
And so then for one thirty-second and thirty-fifth, if it's north of uh, ninety-six, if they rear-ended, like you're saying, coming down this way. Then the, who you just said had to be called, but if it's in the intersection, it's actually us, because that is City of Mill Creek.
That intersection happens to be the north stop line from the southbound traffic on the north side of the, yeah, exactly.
I, I love all these lines, so thank you for that clarification and I, I just wanted to flag that. So I had a question about um, hours, because. I am, I don't know how many people actually walk one thirty-second or, uh, but I am one of those people, because. Um, my kid's school is across the street, um, at Penny Creek Elementary, so it's an unincorporated, um, uh, but. So we use that area walking all the time outside of school hours. And kids do all the time, because there's activities after school and before and after. And so it's something to flag that I'm, I'm happy, it'll go down the whole area to forty, but it's still a concern, because. We don't just use those hours when the um, you know, are, are the, are the flashing zone. So my question for you. Because it's important to have questions and not just discussions, is uh, can you tell me what the school hours are? When, when you, when you give that distinction of, of when it drops down to thirty-five, is it just loading and dropping off? Is it the whole day? I, I only see flashing certain times.
It was during the flashing times. They actually, uh, in their background data and in the report, they did say that it's, they separated it out as during the actual school. The uh, flashing school hours.
Do you know?
During, during the morning, the evening, those are typically drop-off times for an elementary school. It would be right around when it opened. Like probably about an hour before it opens to a half an hour after. Don't quote me on that.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, I just, I was curious. I was like, oh, I actually don't know.
Yeah, it would be right around that area, so when people are coming to there, when there's going to be kids walking, that kind of stuff. Um, a large amount of them going to or coming from school, that's when they would do it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just because there's um, that intersection, again, not City of Mill Creek, but Archbishop High School is on that other side, so there's lots of. Teenagers who are walking to the Amazon Go and to the, you know, to that new area and, and so. The, this, that particular intersection away from like that congested one of one thirty-second and thirty-fifth seems to be getting more volume. But I don't have the data for that, so I was, I was, I'm, I'm happy to support all of this, especially um, you know, anytime we can reduce um. Driving time, because as someone who walks it with my kids, I am always very scared just to walk that street, so thank you.
Other questions? Motions?
I move to adopt a resolution requesting that the Washington State Department of Transportation consider decreasing the speed limit on State Road ninety-six in Mill Creek, Washington.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There are none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Deputy City Manager, are you going to introduce Karen? Is Karen with us? There she is.
We have Karen Reed with us um, to start working on or going over the scope for the city manager's evaluation. I'll hand that over to Karen.
Welcome, Karen.
Thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Nice to see you, even if it's remotely at this point. I'm uh, just here to see if there are any questions or thoughts about. The process for evaluating the city manager for the year twenty twenty-three. And the process document should be in your packets. And the, the general idea is that we would use the same approach that we have used in recent years. Because that did seem to work and in a nutshell, that involves. You first confirming that that's the process you would like to use. Then second, um, I would do some confidential interviews with the members of the leadership team. And one change, which we are proposing for this year, um, that the mayor has, has raised, which I think makes perfect sense.
What's that?
Hey, Martin.
He, he, he's mute.
Okay, um, is to, in addition to the members of the leadership team. Add the two comm staff members since they have a lot of interaction, um, and work extensively with the city manager, so. That would be one change there to the bottom of the first page of this document. Um, to make a note of, after I interview those folks, uh, Martin also will do a written self-assessment. And I will speak to each of you in advance of getting together to uh, hear from Martin about that self-assessment. That first meeting, we all get together in an executive session. We only have the executive session if all seven of you can be there. And we meet with Martin and we get, you guys have the opportunity to ask him any questions about his self-evaluation. And then um, and he presents it and then he leaves and you talk about what your evaluation for him will be this year. After the executive session, I write that up. We reconvene in a second executive session about a week later. You go over the draft that I've prepared for you, make any and all edits you want to make so that it reflects what you would like to say. And then in real time, we share that draft with Martin and invite him to join you in the executive session. And you guys discuss um, the evaluation together. So that's the basic process. Uh, and if there are any questions about it, let me know. I've got a couple of spaces highlighted in this document, just so you. Uh, can make a note of them. For example, on page two, we've noted that we could have a brief minority statements if there are some. That is something that we have had in past years and that's still in here. Um, if you uh, roll back a few pages in this, you will see that the form has been updated to include. Your priorities from the twenty twenty-three, January twenty twenty-three council retreat. The top five council goals and how progress, I mean, you would, you identified there that you would like to make progress on those by twenty twenty-six. Or twenty twenty-five, so it's not like there was an expectation that those things would be completed. But the idea is to check in on progress on some of those priority goals. And so this form has been updated from last year to reflect what those newer goals are. With that, I will just see if there are any questions or concerns that I can try to address.
Councilmember Paddock.
Thank you. Um, will we be, will we be provided with our prior, excuse me, our prior feedback?
We can.
Think that'd be useful.
Yeah, if you'd like to see it from last year, we can make sure to include that in the packet.
Thank you.
Okay, we will add that to the packet. On page two of the document, you'll see, you'll get the city manager's self-assessment. A write-up that I've created from talking to the leadership team members, the city manager's job description, his contract. Your current goal emission statements and the list of the twenty twenty-three priorities, and we will add to that his most recent. Evaluation, and those will all be in um, exec session packets that Adrian will kindly be. Uh, putting together for you and you'll, you'll want to pick those up before the exec session. The first one we're proposing. Would be on uh, February thirteenth.
Councilmember Stigler.
Hi Karen, I just had a quick question. I was looking over the, the questions. Um, and I went from number seven, community relations, to number eight, which is under Part C, employee development. Number eight talks about employee development. It doesn't have uh, things like rating rationale, specific, specific comments on strengths and weaknesses in this category. Is that, is there a reason for that, or was that just an oversight or?
I think it's a different type of question. We're here, we're, we're just trying to say. What specifically would you suggest that he might want to get some training in? So it's sort of a, you could certainly speak to the rationale. In the past, it really, it's been sort of a, a different type of a question.
I know that in the area of employee development, this was an area that we, we had the uh, city manager focus on and he did focus on it. Specifically in, you know, certain criteria and such, and so we might want to look at that in fairness to him. Did he implement some of the, uh, which he did, uh, some of the um, uh, uh, well. Implement some of the criteria, uh, reports, um. Uh, changes that we want to see in the area of employee development.
Well, if there, if the group is in consensus on the idea, I, I don't have any concerns with adding uh, something in that question. Part C, question number eight, adding something, did this, did the city manager undertake the types of trainings recommended by the city council?
Okay, and did he?
Last evaluation and add the rating and rationale.
And did he complete some of the goals or something like that? I, if we look back on, I know that was an area of concern to us, the employee. Development, employee recognition, employee, um, you know, uh, improvements, he, he did a lot in that area.
Mm-hmm.
And we asked him to, so I, I wanted to, in all fairness, want to make sure we. Uh, maybe mention that in there, and, and maybe that's something we can do in the executive session, but I'm just wondering if. If, if that was the reason why that one didn't have the same criteria added of rating rationale and specific comments.
It's sort of a different kind of question, but if you guys would like to adjust it to. Refer back to your earlier suggestions and evaluate that, you could, I, I think that's fine.
Okay, maybe that's something we can just add.
We can either add it or there, I think there's a catch-all that, that could get encompassed, so one way or the other, it will be part of our discussion, I'm sure.
Okay. Now that I brought it up, I'm sure.
Yeah, other questions, comments? Everyone good? Proceed. Okay, thank you again Karen for helping us out. I think it's good to have this process kind of becoming institutionalized, so we're. Not making something up every year and getting some continuity, so appreciate your help.
Thank you. I'll see you all shortly and thanks to everybody for checking in on the, the first, first. Count, quick council discussion I'm going to have with each of you, appreciate that, and I will see you on the thirteenth. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, Laurel, are you going to introduce us or you want me to?
If you want to.
Okay, I'll do, so we are at, the next two items, uh, study session items are. Our annual tasks at the beginning of the year. The first one is the council and uh, committee liaison. Um, assignments, and before we get into walking through the list, I want to throw something out, you know, we've been talking, I've been talking with other mayors. Um, I, over the last six months about how they deal with their councils and committees. And it's been interesting, because I'm hearing that some cities are doing away with their liaison roles. Some cities are moving to alternating. We historically kind of just have kind of not had a formal process other than who is up, do you want to do it again? Um, I want to throw out for consideration to get involvement of everyone involved in different councils or committees. Whether we should move to a structure where. We don't necessarily formally alternate, but we don't re-up someone automatically. We give, if another council member wants to have a position on one of the boards or councils. They'll have that opportunity to do it. If no one else wants to do it, then the person who's done it the prior year can continue. Um, but I want to throw that out for discussion to get people's thoughts and input before we get into actual assignments. Mayor Protem.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go, um, I want to throw out, I've been also having discussions with other. Leaders in other cities and um, I don't think that there's um, necessarily will on this council for this, but um, it's. As I've been discussing with some of the other cities, they've pointed out to me that they have gotten rid of their liaison roles with their. With their volunteer boards and commissions and because the way it was working before, it was not working very well to have a council liaison. And they have went to having city staff um, liaisons only to come back and then having the actual. Chair of that board come to council as the liaison and update the council on what's going on. And I actually, that is the opinion that I think that we should be looking into um, moving to. Uh, that said, since I don't think that there's a shared will on this council to move that way with me, even though that's the way I think is the best way. I would, I mean, if it, because I do, a lot of the other councils are going and, and alternating. Um, and as I've talked to them, I do think it's helpful to alternate, because. I think it helps each of us to learn different roles and to learn what others are doing. Um, and to learn how things, things are working and for the um, the actual boards to get to know different council members. And, and just have a different perspectives um, as well. And I do think it's important that we, if we are going to keep liaisons, that we make sure we go over the roles. Um, and really fully understand what the role of liaison is, because I think it is clear from my discussions. That this is something that um, other cities are struggling with. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there since we're having discussion. Thanks.
A lot of lights came on at the same time, so I'm going to go in the order that I believe that they were lit up, so Councilmember Duque.
I fully support having um, more of that formal rotating, um, uh, sorry, having, having a more formal. Let's all put our name out there first about who might be interested in the position, because you were saying there's kind of been a. Um, if the person still wants to do it again, then they'll get to do it. Um, I like the, the idea that, you know, multiple of us can. Suggest our names for, for one, but um, as thinking about this, I think it's actually a fantastic idea. That we do get to somehow rotate, whether it's every two years or every year, um, from the. that we do get to somehow rotate, whether it's every two years or every year, um, from those um, from being a member of, or being um that liaison, because it allows us, and then expectation that we should be switching around. Because then it gives us the opportunity to learn and to talk to more um, more of the different groups and seeing how things work instead of kind of being sticking to one. I know I say this as someone who's obsessed with parks and recreation. So I, I, I get that I have that on my head, but I, I was really thinking about it, and I thought, you know, it makes absolute sense. I mean, I did have some experience with the arts and beautification board um on, on the other end of being a part of it. But I, I think it makes a lot of sense, especially with the very few design review board meetings that I have, that have happened while I've been um part of it. I want to say, I like the idea, the reason why I said two years, um, I do like the idea that you do have some um continuity with your role as the liaison on the um committee. Because I think you get to really see what is it that they're, what they're needing. But you as um the liaison, you know, I look at the committees as, for some of them as like focus groups and, and be, and where, you know, they're advisors to us. So being able to have a year or two years where you're really getting to understand how they work, the mechanics, what we want from a council out of them, uh, what we're learning as city staff. I mean, um, to Mayor Protem's point, um, how other cities are going to city staff. We do have city staff members on all of ours already. Um, and so I will end there because I think everyone had their hands up.
Councilor Paddock.
Uh, I would echo what councilmember Duque said as far as answering your question. Yep, it does sound like a good idea to uh create a opportunity to do some rotation. Would agree with it. Two-year term sounds about right, um, when and if that discussion comes up based on term. Have a couple of other questions, but on that question, I'll leave it at that.
Councilor Stekler.
I am, I have a couple of thoughts on this. Um, one of the, one of the challenge we have with other cities is, you know, no, no two cities are the same. And uh, we have a very unique situation in our city. We've been through a, a number of city managers over the years, and we have had a significant turnover in staff. Significant is probably an understatement by any means. And uh, one of the challenges that we have with that turnover in staff is the only consistency really that we've had has been us, in many cases, the uh council met liaisons on some of these boards. Case in point, I've been um the council liaison for the A and B board since I came on this council. Um, umpteen years ago. I have been through um three city managers, and I think, I was trying to count it up in my head, four city liaisons on the A and B board. The current uh city liaison has been on for, for, I think this is their third year. But there are so many past instances where this uh, uh, it's my history that has allowed us to allow me to be able to answer questions for them. So I think the consistency of having some of these uh council liaisons on some of these uh boards has really helped us. And to say, well, after two years, we're going to bring in a new council liaison and give up that um intelligence that we have and that history that we have on that particular board is a, um, would be, I, I'd have to say a little bit short-sighted. And it would ha- uh actually hinder the boards because, again, our liaison's job is just to provide input to the board when they ask for it, you know, uh, that's what the guidelines say. Um, we are there when they ask us, um, if they have a question about something, we can respond to them, or we can provide a response to the council, uh, update to the council. That's what's in the guidelines that were redone a few years ago. So uh, that's a benefit that we bring to that board. We're there to listen, observe. And if they have a question or uh, and they address us with it, we can answer it for them. Like, what, what do we do about this? Have we ever done this in the past? What's the cost? Where do we find out where this money is? And uh, what is our budget for this year? A number of questions that our city liaisons cannot answer. So um, if there are other council members that would like to get on our board, that a particular council member's been on, I don't think there's any reason why we couldn't have a second council liaison on the board. And let's start building a backup person. Um, because one of the things that's true is no council member is assured of being revoted in. So if you've got somebody on a, a particular uh, uh board that uh provides that consistency, and another council member wants to get on that board, why can't they be the backup person, come to every single meeting and learn and gather that intelligence and be able to provide that backup um at a, at a later date. But to just make a change and give up that intelligence and that history does not make a lot of sense. And it would be very short-sighted. That could actually be detrimental to that board. So I don't, I don't think that's really a very good idea, to be honest with you. I think it's a, I, I don't see the value in doing that. But uh definitely would not want to keep another council member off the board if they wanted to. If, if another council member wants to get involved, let's have two council liaisons on a board. Let's, let's not push somebody out. But uh, let's not push, again, let's not push somebody out who has the intelligence and, and history that can help that board either. That, let's, let's, let's do whatever we can to help our citizen boards succeed. Thank you.
Councilor Allison.
Well, actually, I, I agree with John. I, I think that um probably the smartest thing we could do is have someone that is an alternate attend the meetings and, and get to know the board um in case they have to wind up in that position. Um, but maybe we all need a little reminder or a little study session or something on what the responsibilities of those liaison positions are, so that we're consistent with each of the boards.
We can certainly do that. So I'm, I'm not necessarily hearing a will of a majority to make a change, am I? Hmm?
Maybe, maybe clarify that, just if you wouldn't mind reiterating the change.
I, I had suggested going to, I will let councilmember Cavalier chime in before I, go ahead, Vince.
No, go ahead, mayor.
What I was throwing out is whether we wrote, it's not rotating, it's not a mandatory change. It's just that rather than, in, in the past, we've just said, you've done it the last year, do you want to continue doing it again? Putting a, I guess, a one-year term limit on it, and if no one else wanted to do it, that person could serve again. But it's just giving the opportunity to rotate. Then I heard a few of you suggested rather than annually doing that, allow a two-year continuity. So I don't know if there's a consensus for two years. If not, let's not spend a ton of time debating this and have a discussion in February on the roles and responsibilities. So we're all on the same page with that and move forward.
Well, if I could.
Yeah, no, councilman, councilmember Cavalier, did you want to?
Um, no, I, I don't have any comments. Um, but, well, I tell you what, I, I would be curious. This has been the procedure uh all this time since that I know of it. I'd be curious to see what, what Grant would have to say on the matter. Um, is there any rules or codes or changes that need to be made? Or is this just a, a will of the council or a whim of the council at the time?
Grant, did you have any input?
It's really uh up to you. We have some, we, we have a, a description of the gen- uh generally the roles and responsibilities in the governance manual. Um, so it's not in code as much as it is in the governance manual, which is really your, your own procedures. So uh, it's really a, a, something that the council uh can exercise its discretion.
Thanks, Grant. Um, to councilmember Steckler's point, I think he's right about continuity. I, I, I think that that helps. And whether it's one years or two years, if you have four people that agree with you, or three people that agree with you, then, then we can, you know, either make some, make some new music or sing the same old song. It doesn't really matter, but um, I would support either one. Um, again, I'm not married to the process from before, but I think there is some value to it, uh, to piggyback on councilmember Steckler's plan.
Councilor Paddock.
Uh, let's see, so, so I just want to make one uh point of clarification. Uh, in, in the exhibit B of the governance manual, it does specifically say that the time is normally a term of one calendar year, which may repeat if the council so determines. So right now, kind of that, the benchmark is a year, and then repeat if, if uh, if uh the council so determines. Um, I, I do, the, the comment you made about perhaps we look at this in a study session on, in February that would incorporate the, what is the role of a liaison? And is it consistent, as councilmember Allison mentioned, is it consistent for each of the city-focused boards, planning, art, parks, finance? I know there are many other boards, but are they consistent in those? One of the things that's also in the, the manual is that a, a, a written report is provided every meeting. I've seen maybe five, and I think Al from the planning commission did three of them. So things like that, you know, I think it would be good hygiene for us to take a look at and um, and all get on the same page, or at least four of us get on the same page.
Okay. Councilor Duque.
While I uh respect what councilmember Steckler said about continuity and having that guidance, I don't know why someone, if we did every two years, every, you know, or, or just allowing it for each year, that if I'm on the arts and beautification board, that I wouldn't just go to a former, to another, my colleague and say, this is what's going on. Let's, you know, is there any information that we can have? I'm, I just, I'd like us all to have a chance to be on these boards. I also know that there's um potential issues with boards and how, you know, that we don't want to be too overpowering where there's too many of us um attending and, and allowing them the opportunity to speak. And because they are, you know, are rep, they're who we are representing, but we're supposed to be hearing from them. So I know there's a little bit of that, but I, what I'm asking um in terms of what you brought up is that we at least have to nominate ourselves for each one. Um, and it's not just an automatic, you've done it before. Um, and so you should get it again. I would like us to move away from that because I think there's a little bit um in play about um how that is. And it doesn't mean that anyone would have to vote for someone else. You might say, you know what, I'm going to vote for this person because they have the senior. Um, but I'd like the chance that we can nominate and have that process be clear.
And then the language you hit on is if the council so determines, there's no meaning given to that. So I think the way I'd like to proceed is, I think where we're heading is, let's do a study session. We'll try to get it in February. We have a busy calendar, but as soon as we can. But I think what, what we should do is, in the past, we've just said, do you want to do it again? So I think if we should uh take nominations, and if more than one person wants to participate in that board or commission, then we end up, might end up having to take a vote.
Then who, who would vote? The council or the board?
The council.
Why would the board vote?
The board has no role in this. This is our liaison, this is our, this is our liaison to the bo- to these boards. It is simply a reporting function.
The council, they could provide them the best assistance. Wouldn't you give them that? Or they feel that they would get more from one person than another. Why not?
We, we've.
Why not?
That's not the role of a citizen board. Um, so are we okay with that going through the process that people could throw their name in if they're interested, and if there's more than one? And then we would have to take a vote? I mean, that's, as the council so determines, that's, I think, so, go ahead, Vince.
So if this maybe makes things a little easier, I, I'm not forged, I, I, I like the the process we've had before. I think it's worked well, and as long as we're courteous to one another. I won't be seeking another term on the parks board. I've done it now for seven years as a liaison and another four or five. So twelve years in total as a citizen. Um, I'd like to do other things and, and maybe pass the baton. So if this kind of, you know, blunts the nail, then I'm happy to just throw it out there now.
And I'm planning to step aside as SCT. I've got enough going on that Stephanie is interested in taking the lead on that, I believe. And so I'm happy to step aside, and I've done that for ten years now. So a- any other comments on what I outlined for proceeding?
I will just go on, go on record. I, I um, I feel like there's some other, I don't understand the reason. I, I do understand what was presented here today, but I think there's some other reason why we're having this discussion some. Um, and I, I don't know what it is. I think we've had, as Vince, councilmember Cavalier said, we've had a system that's worked really well for the boards all these years, and I don't understand why we want to make a change with something that's been working. But um somehow there's a reason why that's not being said.
I'm not suggesting there's a reason why. I was having a discussion about what it means as the council so determines and whether there's people that are interested in participating in a board who aren't getting a chance to because someone that just wants to continue doing it for an extended period of time. Councilmember Paddock.
I, I know I can only play this card so many more elections, but as the newest member of, of this group, I will say that the first time this came up, when, when I was new, um, it, it was pretty much, here's the paper, these are the, these are the uh assignments. Everybody looked good. And, and I had to, you know, as, as the new guy, say, oh, well, hold on a second. I'd, I'd actually like to be part of that. And I really appreciate that, that councilmember Steckler was one of the first ones to say, hey, look, if you're interested in X, maybe you can come. Why don't we, why don't you go ahead and do that? As magnanimous and thoughtful as that was, and I am very grateful for that, um, that shouldn't be the process. And um it, there should be something when, when and if, heaven forbid, there's a, there's another newer member that comes along. They should be afforded an opportunity to be on a board. Uh, uh, and again, as the uh, as the council so determines that process, whatever that process is.
And back to your question, John, I mean, I think the reason we're having this discussion is we've never discussed it before. In my ten years, we've always, like councilmember Paddock said, we've always just said, oh, do you want to do it again? Let's just do the same old, same old. So I was just trying to evoke a discussion, and I think it's been a good discussion about what, how we handle this. Councilmember Duque.
Confirming no hidden agenda, no specific ones and full transparency. I did reach out to councilmember Cavalier last year, and then again, this uh, not twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. And then again, twenty twenty-three, asking, hey, if you're, if, are you, are you interested in stepping down? And had those conversations and, you know, um, because I thought that was based off of the system we were doing. I assumed that's the appropriate way to, to go about that, and very transparent about it and, you know, happy to accept. But there's no hidden agenda. It's just same as councilmembers um Paddock said, I came on, and it was like, here's the list. And I went, oh, but I'm, I don't like that. Like, that's liter- that's literally it. I don't like that it's just assumed that, that we, that I don't have a chance in our democracy to put my name forward. That's it. But no, no back-talking of like, I'm trying to get someone out, anything like that. And that's why I'm giving it the transparency to share with all of you that I did, you know, speak to councilmember Cavalier because I respect, you know, uh, he was, he was my liaison when I was on the Parks and Rec board. And so I didn't want him to think um I was coming after him or anything like that. And so just flagging that part.
And I, I, I do respect that, and it's a good discussion when you're a new council member, and I remember when I was. But uh, at the time, nobody really wanted to be on Arts and Beautification Board. And uh, so I, I volunteered for it uh and have spent many years building up that board and doing some pretty remarkable things for this city. And that board means an awful lot to me, and I've got many, many, many years invested in that board and a lot of history behind it. And so, yes, I am very desirous of continuing with that. I've built something there. And so to say, well, you can't just automatically continue with that. It's got to be up to the decision of the council. Um, I don't, I don't see that as right either, uh, when you build something up. So I find that discussion to be rather, you know, unnerving to me. Um, so yeah, you, we all felt that when we first started out here. Um, I got on something called the LEAF Board, and nobody could ever explain what the acronym was because nobody else wanted to do it. Um, but, you know, I accepted it, um, just like I accepted the A and B board. Uh, because nobody else really wanted to do it at that time. But now it, you know, it, it is something that, that, that I have given my blood and sweat to. So yes, I am very protective of it, and um I don't think this discussion sits well with me, to be quite honestly with you. Quite honest with everyone.
But John, as you said, anyone is welcome to go to any of these meetings regardless of what happens.
Absolutely. I, I'm just, uh, I don't like the idea of being asked not to go to the meeting.
No one's asking anyone not to go to the meeting.
Well, they're saying if somebody else wants to go on the meeting, then we might have a vote to see who the decide will go.
They would be the designated liaison who would be the one who formally reports back to us. It wouldn't prohibit any council member from going to the meetings.
And as one who's been that liaison, who's built that, I would like to continue that.
Fair enough. Councilmember Cavalier.
Just to, to hopefully wrap this up in a bow. In fairness to the conversation to everybody, this has always been seniority-based kind of apparatus. So um, just because someone wants to change it today doesn't make it so. So I, and I think that's indicative of our culture today, that, that there's this overwhelming desire that, and, and this is no response to you, it's just generic statement that, well, why can't I have it too? Well, um, in some cases, someone may have been there longer and they're more invested, like councilmember Steckler is saying here. He wants to see some projects through that they've begun this year to the end. So um, to simply say that, well, I want to turn at it too, is, is, is kind of a. So um to simply say that, well, I want to turn at it too, is 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 kind of a to me an unreasonable ask. And like I said, I I I was going to step down anyway this year. I've done it long enough. Uh the only the last thing I wanted to see was to make sure that Silvercrest Park um got in the in the R F Q. And uh and I believe that's happening this month, so I'm uh I'm thrilled about that. I think it's been a great body of work. And uh and again. We have to give some sort of deference to a council member that's sat there in the trenches doing all the work all along. I think that's that's a fair process, and that's the definition of seniority. Thanks.
Okay, I think everyone said their piece. Let's pull the list up. Go through it. We pulling the list up on the screen? Okay, we start right off, A and B Board. Who's interested? I hear Steckler might be.
Pretty good, Sean, yeah. Love to have somebody join me.
I'd like to be the alternate.
Okay. Any objections? Anyone else interested? Okay, put down uh councilmember Steckler is the. Well, we should change that uh the heading from representative de liaison. Um so we have uh John and Connie.
Can you put it in twenty twenty-four instead of the twenty twenty-three column?
Yeah. It was, it stays, yeah. Okay, Park and Rec Board. Councilmember Duque nominates herself. That's fine. Any other, anyone else interested? Anyone interested in being the alternate?
Um, Mayor, I would actually like to go back to being the alternate if councilmember Cavallari is indeed stepping down. Because I I gave it up so that Melissa could, or councilmember Duque could do it, and I do love the parks board too.
Okay. Any objections? Okay, so we have Duque and Vinyal. Left Board. Did we already vote on that one?
So so can I just say one thing?
Wait, 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 was the left appointed for two-year terms? Okay, so that that's why that one's there.
And and we elected them as a formal.
So that has already been done. Councilmember Cavallari.
So just out of curiosity, it's my underst- didn't the last left member on the board, is he no longer with us? My understanding, it's what I thought I heard.
I I don't believe that's correct.
Almost, almost.
It's.
Okay, uh Planning Commission. It was councilmember Paddock last year. Anyone interested? Planning Commission? Anyone else? I don't think we had a backup last year. I'm not sure we need one. Okay. You think who did? Oh, Al, okay. Well, we don't need to put that down. Just put down Sean as the person. The D R B. Were you the last year? Could you? Not sure who's running the document. Could you change last year's representative to reflect it was Melissa? Did uh who's interested for twenty-four? I see Melissa's hand up. Anyone else?
Full disclosure, very little meetings, but I, the reason why I would like to continue is I do think there's this element now with some of the approvals. Of um ju- just looking at how as a council member I can help assist in terms of like ordinances or looking into that. That avenue as we move forward with um any of the planning. I'm I'm just, you know, they meet so rarely, but if anyone else wants it, happy to not take it. But I'm okay for continuity because there's been two meetings I've attended.
Okay, Youth Advisory Board.
And Mayor, um we needed to have a discussion on the Youth Advisory Board. Because we created that spot for me to go, and I was going. And we had the Youth Advisory Board was really involved in wanting to learn more about government. And had me doing lots of conversations, but then once um Kristen has left and things have been switched up. That has not been happening, and so there has not been any um liazzoning with the Youth Advisory Board. So um I think either that needs to go away again, or either we do need to have a discussion on actually getting involved in somehow, so.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Um just to give some background, prior to last year and creating this position, the Youth Advisory Board, and they actually still do. Participate within the Parks and Recs Board sphere, so if that kind of asks and answers your question ahead of time, I think that's helpful if we just make this go away.
Any objection? So we'll have no designated representative for the YAB. Advisory Board. Okay, next page, please.
Um this one also, last year, I'd said I can't really go to these, and then nobody wanted to do them, so we just put down me. And so I really can't get to those very easily because they it we do have the um staff is always there. Um and they typically are the Wednesday before S or the right before the S C T meeting. Um which ends up being Wednesdays, right? Uh like, ah, forgot, is it five or six? Because it ends up just being an awkward time. So we need to throw back out there if somebody does want to go and participate in those. Then you are more than welcome to join.
Does Al cover these?
I know s- a staff member does go to all of them, whether or not.
Yeah, I'm not sure this is one we need a council representative for. It's more important to have a council person at the Snohomish County tomorrow.
The W R I A, that wasn't me this past year, that was Sean. Learned a lot, though, didn't you? I did. So if you could change twenty twenty-three council representative to, oh, I see, there it is, okay.
I I think so. Sean has graciously volunteered to continue and without it without objection or other nominations. Okay.
I've never actually done my.
Hey, you're you're all in.
We we came in at the same time, so I wound up with it and and it skipped your.
Yes. We can talk about it. It's something that you're like not wanting.
Put councilmember Paddock as the representative with an asterix and councilmember Duque as the alternate is an asterix. And they might play rock, paper, scissors to see. Uh Snohomish County tomorrow, I'm willing to, if Stephanie's interested, to step back and. And be the alternative unless someone else wants to be the alternate on that committee.
Yeah, I'm definitely interested, and um I've been being the alternate, and I would um. Love hate to to go and 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 be the main person because I was so excited to do it, and it's some of those meetings are kind of boring. Um but I will um I would definitely be excited to be the liaison.
Anyone else? So this one is a little unique from the others because as we've talked about in past years, there's issues that. The representative comes and has a discussion with us to get a determination of what the will of the majority is to on certain votes at the. The uh at S C T, so hearing no objections, and we'll put Stephanie as the representative and I'll be the alternate for twenty-four. Um Snohomish County Fire, I don't think there's anything we needed here. We had a position on the board in the transition or. And uh maybe not the board, but was it the board formerly? I, we had some role that expired at the end of the year. This is uh one we're gonna have to give some discussion of how we, we need to stay involved. The challenge is the South County Fire's board meetings are the first and third. So the first and third, they conflict with our council meetings.
First and third Tuesday.
Um so we've got to find a way to get someone there. Not it doesn't necessarily have to be a council member, but I don't think we'll resolve that tonight. The Health Board can come off since it's no longer a Health Board. It's now a Department of the County. Uh the Chamber, this is one, I think this is councilmember Duque. Is gonna note that you're, are you talking about the Chamber?
Yes, I'm so I'm on the board.
Yeah, you're on the board, and I I'm not sure there's an assignment for this one. This one is open to all and encouraged to all who can attend as as available.
Yeah, but I'm happy to make um if needed, I was keeping the reports in my report. But based off of, I mean, when we do our study session, if it's determined that you guys want a more formal one and, you know, quarterly or something along those lines. With, you know, the president of the, you know, we can have the, you you'd let me know what you guys want to have for the discussion. I will say for the um in terms of the events and activities, I'm trying to clarify what um our membership does. Because technically it's for one person, so then we would, you don't pay, there's a whole thing. So if you are interested in attending, um it's the the the, please attend. But just flagging for you that our membership is um not um like not like all, like three of us don't get covered that way. Or with that membership anyways.
But I believe that if you wanted to go to the chamber lunch, you'd be reimbursed for the lunch.
Yes.
So.
Oh, so yeah, so yeah.
Are are the meetings held here? They're not longer held, they're no longer held at the dental building.
No, they've.
Oh, yes, thank you for that clarification.
They've been holding most of them in the.
I think they're here second floor.
Yep, the City Hall North. And then I have one more thing, if it's okay, Mayor. The other thing that we're trying to do with my role um is create a government uh relations liaison type of committee. Within the Chamber and seeing if there's members that are interested in that. And we have talked about having a staff member um from the city side. So if there's someone else who would be interested in that aspect, wanting to be part of it. Um I'm happy that there's, you know, two of us, for example, for that. And I can have um more detailed information for when we um do our next study session.
Okay. So yeah, there's no, just put all invited for council representatives. And then if you could move to the next page, we're almost done. I'm not sure there's too many more uh sno come, have we?
Are you still doing that, Vince?
So I I'm merely an alternate now at this point. I'm not a voting member. So whether you want to have a council member there or um or just leave it to Stan, Chief.
Chief, what's your opinion? Is it beneficial? Are there electeds participating in this, or is it primarily?
Yes.
There there are electeds that participate. We should probably identify a liaison. And then go to the board with that information so that they can make a determination when they elect their new board members and things of that nature, so.
So we elect them here and then they elect them there as well.
So we have to formally elect someone.
I don't know if we do. I know they do under their charter. I think we just appoint. That's what we've been doing.
So who's interested in being that position?
It's if you want to check, if someone else wants to check it out, I'm happy to pass them time. I've done it four years now.
Anyone?
Um I, yeah, I mean, I think um if councilmember Cavallari is still looking to it. Because I I would technically be interested in that, but eight thirty A M is when the bus comes, so it's kind of hard to do.
It's at nine thirty, nine thirty, I think.
It says eight thirty.
Did they change it to nine thirty?
I think it stands nine thirty, right?
Because it says eight thirty on here.
I think this is old, but the meetings have consistently started at nine thirty, ten o'clock.
So they haven't held a meeting in the last. Last month, I believe they held a meeting. Well, I'll check my calendar and make an update, but I believe it, I believe he's right. It is a more of a nine thirty meeting.
I was gonna say, if councilmember Cavallari does not want to do it, because I do not want to take that from you, if you want to be.
No, please, go ahead.
Then, and it is at nine thirty. I'm putting a lot of ifs on here. Then um then I would actually love to do it because I just couldn't do it because at eight thirty, it's just impossible.
Let's put the mayor pro dim down with an asterix, subjects who confirm the time of the meeting and Vince is the alternate with an asterix.
Perfect.
Yeah, that work for you.
Uh P S R C, we don't need to decide tonight. That's just the General Assembly. One of us gets appointed to be the technical voting member at the General Assembly in the summer, so we don't need to deal with that now. Community Transit, I think, is a historical relic because of Mike's involvement on community transit for years on the board. So this was always one that was put down with his name just because he was on the board. So I'm not sure there's anything needs to be done with Community Transit or Port of Everett. And then um the the committees is one that. I I'm assuming that the people who are on the committees this past year want to continue and that no one else. I don't have time to do either of these committees, and I'm happy with the people that.
Be on the finance committee that is not. Who would want my place?
Same, same.
Same, same from Sean, I mean.
Anyone.
I'm happy to stay. I'm happy to go.
I got plenty of meetings already, so I'm I'm happy. So th- those two will stay the same for twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay, and I believe that.
Want to go back perhaps?
Huh?
If the uh Snohomish uh County tomorrow was still, that alternate is still open.
Would you like to do it instead of me? I'm fine with that.
I want to make sure I kept the finance first before I signed up.
Yeah, it was. So you yeah, switch, yeah, put down councilmember Paddock for that one. And I believe that's the end of the list.
I I'd like to put myself down as an alternate should a position open up on the legislative. I'd like to get more involved with that.
Okay.
But if one opens up, not ask anybody to step down. If everyone gets, anyone gets overloaded or. Yeah.
And the reason.
If anyone mysteriously gets ill and cannot.
More than three, that's why.
Okay, is that the end of the list? Okay. Good. Um oh, I've almost skipped overnight them. So then the other annual thing we have to do that we inst- tried to institute last year is the annual, the proclamations for the year. So what we did is put together, it's somewhere in the packet, is a list. I believe the left column are the proclamations that we've typically read annually for the la- over the last five years. And then the list on the right are the ones that either council members or others have raised. That after Mayor Protem and myself and city manager and the deputy city manager talked about as the ones that we would recommend. That we have staff put together a proclamation and figure out the appropriate time for a proclamation in the coming year. And then I believe we're going to be coming back at a subsequent meeting with the S O P putting more, that was that? That wasn't in the packet, was it? Yeah, with a little more formality to what we have in the guidance manual for identifying when we'll pursue new proclamations. But uh any objections to the list or the ones that are proposed to be added?
Can we put it back up?
Yeah, well, let's put it up on the s- screen really quick if we could.
And the proposed are just additions to what already exists?
Correct. So the the ones on the left, when the what shows up, may not have been done every year consistently. But there are ones that we've done at least once over the last five years. Um and the other ones are the ones that, like I said, uh council members have brought up or others have raised that we thought would be worthwhile. And then we'll have an S O P so that we can go, we're trying to avoid having to, people come to us all during the year and have to investigate. Various requests so that we can do do it on an annual basis in January every year.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Duque.
But if something does come up and there's a lot of time, can it be sugge- like, what does that process look like?
We're figuring that out.
That's what you're, that's what you're saying, you're figuring out. So, okay, perfect, thank you.
So so those are my comments too, is is I want to keep some flexibility here. Because um there's been several instances where, I mean, like, we were one of the first cities in the community to issue a proclamation or even a resolution. Just because we we felt the need, we felt the desire, so. And I certainly, maybe formalizing it too much is is probably. I don't know if I would agree with that because I I like the idea. I like what your list here. It's a contribution from all of us in that list. And uh, you know, the flexibility when things happen, you know, the world's a dynamic place, so I think we've been pretty, I'm pretty proud that we've been very responsive to issues.
That flexibility is in the guidance manual now that the meat that we're talking about putting on the bones would just flush that out a little bit, wouldn't take it away or change it. So. Um any other questions, comments on the proclamations for twenty twenty-four? Councilmember Paddock?
So the pro- proposed ones, are we voting on those or the proposed ones are, those are in?
I was gonna do it by acclamation. Unless I hear objections, we have staff proceed with. I'm tongue-tied tonight. Have the staff proceed with preparing those at the appropriate times during the course of the year. Okay, well. Good, got our direction. Okay. Now that brings us to the consent agenda. We have one correction that we need. Do you want, Laurel, do you want to summarize what the correction is to item A on the consent agenda?
Yes, so we had a show fleet wire um on the front page, the the cover sheet. It was not updated. Um it was. It should have been. Eight thousand eight hundred eight dollars and seventy cents. And the cover sheet had it at nine thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. And then the total was four hundred thirty-two dollars, three hundred, four hundred thirty- four hundred thirty-two thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars, and it should have been four hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. So, it should have been approval of check numbers six hundreds, six six eight four two through six six nine four zero, and it should have been in the amount of four hundred thirty-one dollars.
Four hundred thirty-one thousand.
Three hundred eighty-five dollars, or four hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Sean, did your questions get answered?
My question's answered.
Okay. Okay, so could we have a motion to amend item A, the consent agenda, as the Deputy City Manager just outlined?
Motion to amend.
Second.
All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, with that, we'll move to the consent agenda, item A as amended, approval of checks number six six eight four two through six six nine four zero. And ACH wire transfers in the amount of four hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Audit Committee, were Councilmembers Steckler and Cavalier, were there any exceptions?
No exceptions.
No exceptions.
And item B, payroll and benefit ACH payments in the amount of two hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-one cents, any exceptions?
No exceptions.
No exceptions.
And City Council meeting minutes of January second, two thousand twenty-four, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended for item A?
So move.
Second.
All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions, the consent agenda is passed. Uh, reports, Deputy City Manager?
I do not have any reports, um, we can move on to Chief White.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, excuse me. On my, I, in your packet, there was, or I'm sorry, it's a handout this morning, uh, you were, or say, you mean, you received the twenty twenty-three end of year stat report for the Police Department. Some great work was done by the officers over the last year and compared us to last year, and, um, I think we'll be very pleased to see some of these numbers, especially in some of the questions regarding traffic enforcement and things of that nature. Um, traffic contacts were up thirty-nine percent over the last year from the previous. And a lot of, of those, uh, contacts, thirty-nine percent in, ended in some type of enforcement, so. Traffic infractions are up thirty-nine percent from last, the previous year, so it's a great increase, um. Obviously out there, uh, more officers, uh, spending more time on the roads. We're actually able to do a lot more traffic enforcement. In regards to people crimes, um, we did have some increases there. Um, minor increases, uh, nineteen percent increase in, in the assaults. And, but some of these numbers are so low that the percentage increases don't really, it's hard to see what the meaning is, um, in those increases. Eleven, uh, we do have a, the, a report of eleven sex offenses. But, those aren't, those are just reports, so these are, some of those are unsubstantiated and sufficient. Um, we did have one of those go to the prosecutor's office, um, for, uh, some review. Um, and I don't know if a charging decision's come back yet. But, so like I said, some of these numbers are so low that, you know, when you have one offense and the next year you have seven, that's a tremendous, that's a tremendous jump. So, again, although, uh, property crimes are down in many categories, uh, down nineteen percent in burglaries, um, down forty-one percent in robberies, again, a very low, uh, number. Uh, but we're, we're doing, uh, a lot of good work as far as reducing the property crime, uh, category overall. And then, uh, as far as our records unit is concerned, um, public disclosures are up nine point six. So there is a lot of PRA requests still coming in. Um, our gun transfers are down, that is something that's being taken over by Washington State Patrol, we no longer do those. So that's according to new legislation that went, uh, uh, out in twenty twenty-two. As far as the, um, I, I would also, Councilmember Cavalier, uh, request information on the crimes against society, the drugs, narcotics, uh, cases in particular. Uh, those are up, um, and you'll see that most of that has to do with the change in the controlled substance, uh, law last year. So, um, we're very excited to see, uh, this progress. And if there's any questions, I'll, I'll be happy to field those.
Thank you, Chief, any questions? Okay, not seen any, any other staff reports tonight? Okay, just three quick things for me, uh, one, it says code of conduct, what that's referring to, it statement of values and rules of conduct that we sign every two years, I believe. Um, that's required under our governance manual, so I have signed it, I'm gonna pass it up and down the dais if everyone would would sign it and return it. Um, remember the retreat is the twenty-third and the thirtieth, we will feed you. So, uh, I think we'll have, try to have food ready by five fifteen or five thirty, so if you want to arrive a little early, um, for the treat, and then you should have all received the notice for the SCC meeting on the, uh, eighteenth. It's at Terracotta Red, I think most of you've been there, I had dinner there Saturday night, it's great, encourage you to go, it's the elections. So if anyone is interested in getting involved in the SCC leadership, um, those elections will be held on the evening of the eighteenth. And I believe that is all I had tonight, Mayor Pro Tem, any report?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, regarding the SCC meeting, just so everybody knows, I am not running for any of the Puget Sound Regional Council um, positions this year, I had done them for two years, and so I am stepping back and giving someone else a chance to take on that excitement, so just, so if anybody here is interested, then, um, please consider running so that we might have one of our, um, members on one of those boards, that would be amazing. Um, and then second, I wanted to have just a quick discussion, um, as many of you know, sorry, Councilmember Duque doesn't know yet, but I, I bought an electric car over, um, break, over the holiday, and I mentioned this because I wanna, this is relevance to my next, what I'm gonna say. Um, you know, the Legislative Committee, we put, is one of our top priorities for this year. We put down, um, to seek funding and from the state to to look into EV chargers in, in the city. Um, and we, I have had multiple residents who've reached out about this. And, um, also something that was, um, Rhett Berg was really excited about when we talked to her, and she had some really good, um, really good ideas, and I've mentioned those to all of you at the time regarding how it can help economic development. And so I'm circling this back to my buying my car, because it really drove home to me the past couple of weeks that, you know, so many people are buying electric cars now. And when you park your electric car to charge it for thirty minutes, somewhere you're going in and you're shopping and spending money. And I don't want Mill Creek to be missing out on that money. So, um, I just want to give all of you a heads up that, um, this is on our legislative agenda, and I don't know where we are with seeking, um, that money from last year, how that played out. But, um, this is a top priority of mine. And I will be pushing for this and, and moving forward on this, um, just so all of you are aware, because I think it's extremely important that we find facts out, like what do we need to do, how do we get involved with this? How do we incentivize, or do we, or is there federal programs to help their, to help the, um, the property owners? Um, or, you know, just what does this whole thing look like, because we don't want to sleep on this and have everybody going all the way around us, right outside our limits and and spending their money at those stores instead of ours, because they're charging their car while they're shopping, so I just wanted to, um, bring that up here, want to let you know that I will be pushing forward on this and I'm gonna be excited and, and really adamant about um, moving forward on this, and it is already on our legislative agenda, so, um, I just wanted to share that with everybody, thanks.
Councilmember Cavalier?
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Steckler?
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Allison?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, um, we added the, um, investigation into the electric charging station before Stephanie bought an electric vehicle. Uh, because it really is a, a draw to get people to come, maybe spend a few dollars in our city if, if there's a parking lot with a charging station in it with some businesses, so really it was all about, um, increasing commerce into the city, but thank you, Stephanie, for the passionate, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, um, for the passionate speech. And I have no other report.
Councilmember Duque?
No report.
Councilmember Paddock?
Just one thing, I'm excited that Dewali made it on that proclamation list. Uh, I think the last survey that I saw from the city was that I think it was over thirty percent of our population, uh, identifies as Asian. And South Asian is a huge population growing here in, uh, in our community. And recognizing them, uh, through the Dewali pro- Dewali proclamation, I think is very honorable with this group.
Brings us to, are you done?
Yes.
Thank you. Intelligence Communication, Ms. Heidel, before I move online. Name and city of residence, three rooms.
Barb Heidel, Mill Creek, Washington. Thank you, Mayor. First, I appreciate the wealth of knowledge and information in regard to the reduction of speed data from WashDuck, and you presenting it this evening, thank you. As a lover of data and detailed information, it was fascinating to analyze. I appreciate that and I am so thrilled that you voted in favor of reducing the speed, any place we can reduce speed, except under twenty-five. Deeply appreciated. Secondly, Mayor, I wish to applaud you for presenting the code of conduct. It is especially timely as you work together as a team at the retreat. Conversation is good, differing opinions are expected, and respect of each member is essential, thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Tanner? Anyone else, okay, online, anyone? Seeing a nod ahead, so, okay, we will, nothing else on the agenda, we have no executive session, so we will adjourn at eight twenty-two and reconvene in two weeks for the first night of our retreat. Thank you, everyone.
I guess we should have asked about, are we ready for the snow?
Snowmageddon twenty-four.